The Board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there is generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the Board are welcome to do so during the Board's regularly scheduled meetings held twice monthly. We'll start with Board Communications. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir. It was it was the week of the young children. I'm participating in a committee for the Oregon Community Foundation to look over scholarship applications for a locally specific Klatsepp County Scholarship. I have the pleasure of working with Dan Gaffney on that committee, I might add. I read 21 applications and was moved to tears as I saw the challenges and celebrated the successes of these young people. And I thought, oh, my goodness, what I wish we had, I wish we had something for all of them. I also participated. I have a dog, sorry. I also participated in the graduation at Drug Court yesterday, and that was fabulous. Again, challenges and victories. So I'm heartened and refocused on why we're doing this, which is for the benefit of the generations to come, and they they're inspiring me right now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. And the dog gives his vocal support as well. Commissioner Webb?
Oh, sorry, I'm having a little trouble with my with my computer. I'm not sure I have anything to report, since I have spent most of my time lately with NOAA. So, very exciting, and I hope at a sometime at a work session very soon, we could do justice to the information that I'd like to be able to share with the Board about all the exciting things going on at NOAA. So I'll leave it to that.
Great. Sounds good. Sounds like a plan. Commissioner Bangs?
Well, this week has just kind of highlighted electronic and infrastructure issues. Apparently throughout this week Verizon has had some some struggles and difficulties in my in my region. And so sadly, I spend a lot of time saying, can you hear me now? What about now? Can you hear me now? So a lot of meetings have been rescheduled, and I I kind of just lost a week sadly. But, you know, I've fortunately been able to read a few few good emails, had some comments from some CAC committee members. And and just moving forward, I did field a conversation with Beacon Clubhouse, one of their their managers at Beacon Clubhouse, and so I'll be furthering that discussion. Other than that, yeah, I really hope that Verizon is solved very soon because between CenturyLink outages and Verizon outages, I I get a lot of time at home without my electronics to help me. But anyhow, yeah, other than that, we're doing great.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Bangs. Yeah, very frustrating. Technology can be very frustrating, but it's also a blessing that we've had the ability to get together like this over the last year. Commissioner Toyoka?
Well, thank you, everyone. I literally just walked in the door. It was fortunate I got to go down to Arizona. We drove back and brought our son, who has just finished his freshman year at Embry-Riddle-Aronautico. So just drove back home with him, so it's really a blessing to have him home. But I kind of echo that, you know, the infrastructure is it's nice to highlight that. I've missed a meeting because of connectivity, you know, a budget and a work session trying to stay connected, and it was frustrating. But I think that does highlight, you know, we have some opportunities to work on infrastructure. It will definitely benefit everyone in this community. We got a raw picture of it, you know, throughout the week, so I mean, it gives us another target to look at. And then we have some other, I think, communication within the Board has been wonderful. Had great conversations with, you know, Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner Quayle, County Manager Bond. Hope to get together with Commissioner Webb soon and Commissioner Bangs just to, you know, just keep board communication rolling. And I think the better we as a Board communicate with each other, the more effective we can be for our county and everyone here.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Toyka. I completely agree. I encourage anyone that if you have a question or comment and want to give me a call anytime, please do. And I think that is the key, is having good, open communication amongst the Commission. And congratulations to your son for completing his first year. If we don't have any other, I don't have anything. I did want to make a request of the Board. I know that Steve Fick is going to be joining us for the Columbia River Fisheries Discussion, and he has indicated that he has to catch a plane, so he would like to do it earlier rather than later. So I thought we I told him, I thought we could maybe squeeze a minute, 12:30, do our Public Health Update and Legislative Update, have the discussion on the fisheries. I know that pushes back our road discussion, Ted. I apologize for that. I know that he's he wants to, he wants to be a part of the discussion, but I know his timeline is such that he's going to have to skedaddle a little early. So if that's okay with everybody, we will move him up to right after the Public Health Update today. Okay. We'll start with Legislative Update, and Phillip, I'll turn it over to you. Phillip, you're on mute.
I swore I wouldn't be that person that did that, and I do it every time. I'm sorry. I apologize. Thank you, Commissioner and Commissioners. Just wanted to give you a heads up on a couple of things we're tracking this week. We're starting to see as we get closer to the May 19th Revenue Forecast that some of the smaller budgets in terms of other funds and the smaller general fund budgets are starting to move forward with some work sessions. Particularly yesterday, we saw the Commission for Judicial Fitness move forward out of Subcommittee, and I will just touch that real quick. They're they are just going to fund that at current service level. Not big changes there. It's just moving forward. No pops, no public options included in there. Just moving the budget as it was. The other budget that had a public hearing, or not public hearing, sorry, work session yesterday, was the Employment Relations Budget, and I think that was probably more relevant for the county as that agency or Board serves as a place that if there's a public employee dispute, it can be appealed, and that that Board works on that. I just wanted to note that they moved that out at a little bit higher of a budget than what their current server service level was. The Governor's Recommended Budget went one way with a little bit of a reduction. The Legislature chose to put some additional funds in there for just forecasting. They're starting to see cases increase, but the most interesting part of that conversation in the work work session was that traditionally, as we come out of recessions, you see more appeals coming from that. So they put some extra dollars into there anticipating that in the next two years there may be additional caseload growth there. So other than that, no significant changes in this budget, but they're just moving it forward because it was about a 50-50 split between general fund and other funds. So they felt they could move that now before the Revenue Forecast. There are other ones to borrow with the Public Defense Services Commission. They don't have a work session, but they are starting to hear that budget, and I didn't know if that was one that had significance to the county or not. They will have a presentation Wednesday, and then they will have another presentation and public testimony on the following Monday, the 10th. So if that is of interest to the county, please let me know, and I can start digging through that and see if there's anything particular you need answered. Happy to do so. Then on the the bill list that we have out of our Priority Ones and Twos, I just wanted to let you know we are tracking five bills this week, all Priority Twos and Ones. The first is 2654. This is the bill that allows for electrical cooperatives to use their electric easements for broadband services. We have it as a Priority Two. Didn't award a supporter opposed to it, but it did pass the House already 54 to 0. Six were excused for a committee, but it seems like it was strong bipartisan support for that. That is now in the House up for a public hearing this week. So I'm going to keep tracking that. The second bill that we had on our county watch list was Senate Bill 295. And 295 is particular. It it's it's not being caught up in the package of bills that have been kind of lumped as a police reform, but it's been one that's been in the conversations. It does a lot. It's an ominous bill or a very large bill with a lot of factions put into it. There's work groups that are coming forward on this. They have a work session today, but they've already called for another work session on the 13th. So they are not finished working the bill yet. Particularly, it restructures the aid and assist statutes, and it's really also tied to Senate Bill 24 implementation. With and it also calls for increased use of community-based organizations in this. This bill specifically is also trying to redefine terms for fitness in the judicial side of things. Effectively, what I do want to note is that they have had conversations of this is similar to what we're seeing in the healthcare forums, where traditionally it was health providers that were having access to portions of the community, and they were seeing that there was disproportionate outreach or that perhaps local-based groups have an ability to communicate better with certain populations. So they're trying, this is a bill that is looking at using that same methodology to outreach into communities and provide structure there. So not that there's not structure, just it's a different, it's a different outreach method. They're definitely using the model that they've used for COVID through OHA and community-based organizations. That said, it is a large bill. It is going to be changing. They've already called multiple work sessions, like I noted, so I just wanted to let you know that's on our radar. It's still having conversations. It did pass the Senate in its current form 27 to 1. The one was just a protest vote. Just they are voting no on everything, and then the rest were excused. So it came out of the Senate in a pretty bipartisan manner. I don't know what the plan is on the House side yet, given that there's multiple work sessions scheduled for this bill. Then the last part, House Bill 2681. This is a bill, let me scroll down to my notes here. So this this is relevant for counties. It's going to prohibit county clerks from moving a voter to inactive status based off of just the inactivity of turning a ballot back in. And then it also requires that a notice be sent out prior to general and primary elections when a voter is made inactive due to not matching signatures or name changes. So it's definitely geared towards if I haven't turned my ballot in in six-plus years, you could normally maybe make that voter as inactive. This would prohibit that. And they are have that this bill is up for a work session. It passed the House 2052 to 2. And then, but they are planning to move this forward. And so I just wanted to note that we had it as a Priority One on our list, but as a watch, we have not leaned in as a support or oppose at this point in time. And then the last two bills.
Yep, we have Commissioner Webb has a question.
Oh, perfect. Sorry. Had the videos in the back. Sorry about that.
I too have a dog in the background, but mine isn't as polite as Commissioner Thompson's. So I have to keep myself on mute all the time. I guess I have two questions. First of all, when when a voter is put on inactive status, what does that mean? Does that mean they don't get a ballot?
I believe so, but I also want to make sure that I'm not overstepping my bounds with the county clerk or clerk's office. But I I believe that that they stay on the list, but they just don't get mailed the ballot.
Right. Okay. And so in a in a in a vote-by-mail situation, that's basically taking them off the rolls if they're not getting a ballot, right? Yeah.
I believe so. I believe that there might be an option where you can call and request it, but uh, but I think it's probably more complicated than that, so.
Okay. And is, I know there were several bills introduced that have to do with the whole law enforcement response with mental health providers, et cetera. Is is, I think you said SV24, is that one of them? And is that a part of, people have been talking about the Salem, no, excuse me, Eugene Kahoots program. Is that the one that is modeled after Kahoots?
Very good questions. The answer is, it's the first one. This is part, it it seems to be in the same notion of the police reform bill packages that had passed out of the House a few weeks, a week or so ago. They are trying not to have this as part of it just because the scope's a little bit bigger. This one, I think, is also trying to tackle just police reform, not police reform, police population. Or I am striking out, prison population. There we go. They're trying to look, there's been multiple work groups in the interim that have come back and have said, how do we start curving that that line on prison population? Oregon does have an increasing one, but we have very strong ballot measures that have been passed. And so there are a lot of bills out there still, to your comment, Commissioner, that are working their way through on trying to adjust maybe mandatory sentencing or maybe giving more authority so local to adjust the sentencing criteria. That's the the tone I see this bill coming from, not the police reform conversations over in this one, so.
Okay, thank you.
And then to your, and I apologize, I was writing those. What was the second part of that question? I want to make sure I answered it.
I I think you're fine. I.
I just, Phillip, I see, I think our county clerk is online, so she might be able to comment to the status, well, to the ballots and inactive status of voters. I see. Are you on?
There she is. I'm mute.
Tracy, we can't.
There we go. It helps if I turn my mic on. Sorry about that. So thank you, Commissioners. To answer your questions regarding inactive status, a person is placed on inactive status for a couple of reasons. One is a ballot will come back undeliverable, and they have to update their address, or we get an update from the post office or other means to reactivate them. The other one is non-response for a signature challenge, and which is what this bill is dealing with. If we inactivate them because we challenged their signature, we say it doesn't match, and they don't respond in the 14 days that they have, we can make them inactive. That does mean, yes, they will not get a ballot until they are reactivated, but that can be done through 8:00 PM on Election Day. It does not cancel their registration. So they still stay on the rolls in a sense, just inactive. And this bill is talking about us having to send these people the notice before a primary and a general, which the clerks are are for. It's okay. It's not going to be a lot of expenses. It's just an addition to our current practice, because we already do send them a couple notices.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay, Phillip?
All right. So then I'm going to move to the last bill I have on our list that is House Bill 2172. Again, we also had this in a Priority One status. It's passed the House, 48 yeses to eight nos. And then it has a public hearing on the 6th as well. This bill specifically is in response to House Bill 3194 that was passed in several sessions ago. But what it did, that bill did, was it allowed the Department of Corrections to oversee an earned discharge program to help accelerate if individuals meet criteria, they can be discharged specifically, or it allows individuals serving a period on the post-prison supervision to be discharged early from that. And so this bill does have that a bit. We do, I just want to note, we do have that as a Priority One, and it is tied to mandatory sentencing. So I just wanted to raise that to your attention if there was a reason for us to weigh in one way or another while it was in the Senate. It's just at a public hearing now without a work session scheduled. But given that it did pass the House pretty bipartisan in a bipartisan manner, I would be shocked if it didn't move on the Senate. But there is an opportunity here if we do want to submit testimony to engage. So I do have that on our list just to raise to your attention. And I can go more into that if you'd like me to, but I just also want to be respectful of time.
Any questions for Legislative Consultant?
Well, Commissioner, if it's okay, you're going to get a couple documents, and I hope it was, it's okay, discard them if they're not applicable. But what I was planning to do is we put together a budget kind of brief when Dogami's passed, kind of say, here's what the numbers are going to be, very much just highlights of significant changes, whether they're policy or budget, and bullet pointed that. You folks will be getting four of those this week, one with per judicial fitness and employee relations, and there's another one coming up here. I guess, is that the best method for making sure that you folks know what's going on on the budget side of things? If that's helpful. Okay, perfect. It'll be the same plate, just obviously rolled into a different matter. So, okay, then we will move forward with that as things get happen. So. All right, that is all I have.
Thank you very much, Phillip.
Perfect. Well, thank you. I will talk to you all soon. Bye.
We'll talk to you soon. We'll move on to the Public Health Update.
Good afternoon. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, I kept losing my audio connection in the go-to meeting, so I'm on the phone now. So, as you know, we're still very busy with the vaccination campaign. The good news is we've added some percentages to provide a, I think, a better picture of what's going on in terms of our vaccination coverage in the community. We were originally reporting the percentage of people in Klatsepp County, looking at the whole population who received one dose. And a couple days ago, Chris and I, we we decided to take out those in the population that were ineligible at this point in time, which actually increased our coverage from about 44% to 55%, which is pretty good compared to some counties that we're hearing about. Our clinics continue to be full. We have a clinic today. We have a clinic on Thursday. We have four Saturday clinics reaching out to the 16- and 17-year-olds. And it looks like another change today that we're going to be including those 12, 13, 14, 15-year-olds as well in those clinics. So we've already reached out to our superintendents as well as will have the vaccine in the county, so that's good news. So we're just starting to work on that today. We started offering walk-in clinics last week, piggybacking them into the evening scheduled clinic. And we had a number of people show up, well over 100 that first night. We were anticipating, you know, quite a number of people. And so it was just, it's a nice flow, and that happened again on our our other clinics as well. So walk-ins is part of routine operations now, and will be going forward at least the next couple months. We've hosted a few live events on Instagram, Facebook, and tonight and also next week, we are partnering, CCA is part of it, and Consuelo Hispano is hosting it, and it will be on three platforms, and it's for the Spanish-speaking population. They're very engaged. They're forwarding questions to us, and so we're looking forward to that. And because Chris will be on site tonight at the clinic, he will actually be able to livestream from a clinic, which I think is going to be have a very positive educational impact on the conversation. Another thing to note is that Chris and I, when we first started working together a couple months ago, we kind of targeted June as the transition for leadership, that incident commander role for the Vaccine Task Force. So we're actively in process of doing that with that anticipated date of the beginning of June. I think we're ready for that. Everything about the Vaccine Task Force will stay intact. Our operations will continue as they have been, obviously scaling down and modifying it here and there. But Public Health will move forward, and I will start fulfilling that role, which is the appropriate role for Public Health to be in. So my work with Chris, we tag-team, we have meetings every week. We'll continue, the task force will continue meeting. We were meeting every day. We're now just meeting twice a week. But it will, none of that will be disrupted, and I'm convening meetings internally with our in-house actors around how to maintain integrity through all of our operations. We're also, as you know, having more cases, and those are workplace outbreaks that we're seeing. Of course, we would see that in households. We're seeing, you know, before it was one or two people in a household, and and those who tested positive were isolating. But now we're actually seeing entire households reporting positive cases, and then that sporadic transmission that is to be expected. And this is the new normal until we continue to increase our vaccination rates and more and more people develop passive immunity, which comes from actually being infected. Ideally, of course, we want as many people vaccinated as possible. We continue to receive support on our case investigation and contact tracing from OHA. They partner with us seven days a week, and it's been a tremendous amount of help and support as well. I think that's it for for Public Health. And just, I think, the final, just a final note that both the hospitals and some of our community providers are getting their Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine now, and they will be able to start vaccinating at their clinics. But again, going forward, the bulk of vaccinations will continue to be administered by Public Health. Any other questions for me?
Thank you, Margot. I see we have a couple questions. Commissioner Bangs?
I have a question and a comment, and I'll start with my comment. I just want to make note and say that how much I appreciate the talking sessions that I was a part of, I think, was it last week? And I also appreciate the calculations that you've made based upon population who has actual access to the vaccine versus the population that could not take the vaccine, even if they wanted to, just due to their age group that they're in. And then the question that I had was that with the different varieties of vaccines that we we now have in play, I still have quite a large number of folks, I don't know if you'd say it large, that are more interested in the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine just because it's a more traditional vaccine. And at any point in time, are we going to be able to open up a walk-in clinic, say, just for Johnson &amp; Johnson?
Oh, that's a great question. That, I would like to say yes, but I can't guarantee that at this point in time. You know, relative to the amount of Moderna we have in the community, and we're getting a tray of Pfizer, which will have 1,000 doses on it. You know, we have a few hundred doses, Public Health has a few hundred doses of Johnson &amp; Johnson right now. And then, you know, some of our private clinics have 50 or 100 doses of Johnson &amp; Johnson. So I see that as something that could happen in June. I don't know that that will happen in May just because of the populations we need to reach in May, both first and second doses. And we're working with both Moderna and Pfizer in May. So I think that's something that would have to wait until June. I will say, with the Johnson &amp; Johnson, we have an inventory, and we've had some very successful vaccine outreach events while we were having our events in Seaside and Astoria. Last week, we also had a successful outreach event in partnership with CCA for the homeless population. Ended up giving more vaccine Johnson &amp; Johnson than we anticipated, as well as partnering with our Harm Reduction Program, which is the needle exchange program and vaccinating at that outreach event as well. And we continue to do weekly homebound visits with the Johnson &amp; Johnson. And again, all of those populations, we really want to prioritize the Johnson &amp; Johnson because it's unlikely that they'll come back for a second dose. So I made a note of it, Commissioner Bangs, and we'll, you know, we have to ask the state for the vaccine, and if they'll give it to us, we'll take it.
Awesome. Well, I really appreciate it. I just know that there is an aid. Awesome. Well, I really appreciate it. I just know that there is an age group that doesn't feel like they are at such a high risk and they would prefer, there's a commonality of thinking, I think, that they would prefer those that are most at risk to receive the vaccine that provides the most coverage. Whereas the younger age group just feels like, hey, give me one shot, let me be done. I need, you know, however much coverage it provides and I'll be fine. And so there's that that specific mentality, I think, that that we're dealing with. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions for our County Health Director? Well, I don't see any. I really do appreciate all Margot and Chris have been doing over the last couple of months. It's gratifying to see that percentage of fully vaccinated tick up. I think we're up at thirty-one point seven percent as of the last task force update. Long ways to go though, and as to Commissioner Bangs' points, we've really got to continue that education to the community to get more people to take the vaccine and get closer to that herd immunity number. But but certainly there are more opportunities than ever to do that. And again, thank you very much, Margot.
Yeah, you're welcome. And just, you know, note, I was thinking about this yesterday. It's actually counting on my fingers when I got vaccinated because, you know, they're learning a lot about the efficacy, long-term efficacy of the vaccine and immunity and that threshold. And so I'm thinking, hmm, six months, like, when did I get vaccinated? And so I I'm just preparing myself and in my thinking about, you know, the public health responses as much as we are, you know, wanting to get that first dose in individuals and then wanting them to complete that vaccination, you know, the two dose. So we definitely go above thirty-one percent without question. I would expect in the next couple of months, we're also going to be hearing about the booster dose. And we're getting questions about the booster dose at clinics now, whereas, you know, a month ago, nobody was talking about that. So more to come for sure.
Commissioner Bangs, you had another question?
Well, I just, well, I did, and I didn't want to blindside you with an off-the-cuff question that you might not be able to answer. So when you meet with us next time, maybe you'll be able to give us a little bit of feedback. But what is the research currently saying regarding the need for a booster dose or after the six-month mark? How much immunity do we still have within our bodies?
Yeah, I definitely can't cannot answer that question right now, but it's coming up more and more in our state and local meetings. And, you know, I think that in the next couple MMWRs, there's going to be additional information on this. So I think that, you know, that threshold is six months and then what's going to happen after six months? So I will definitely start gathering that information so I can report back to you as more is revealed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bangs, and thank you, Director Lolich. We'll move on to the Columbia River Fisheries discussion. And appreciate the indulgence to move this up in our agenda. We had a letter that was addressed to the ODFW Commission, urging the ODFW Commission to act regarding the Columbia River allocations for commercial fishing fleets. We had a little discussion about the context for this, maybe some ideas on what exactly the differences between the Oregon's approach and the Washington plan are. So I've asked Steve Fick and Jim Wells from Salmon for All to join us, maybe provide a little more information and take some questions from the Commission. So I'll turn it over to Steve.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Quila. As you know, we we have an issue here of complying with Senate Bill eight thirty, which was designed in two thousand and thirteen to create more opportunity for the recreational and the commercial sectors on the Columbia River Commercial Fisheries, which would economically enhance both fisheries. And since that time, it has not worked. And within that, they had what's called adaptive management. And the adaptive management allows for changes in the plan. And what they initially had done was for a lot of the year, they'd taken the commercial fishery off ninety-nine percent of their traditional fishing area, which is the Columbia River. And they said, well, we're going to put more hatchery production into these select areas, which I think we can all see when you put that kind of increased volume in there. You've seen the bird predation and the sea lion predation have just simply created a feasting area instead of spreading out like nature is intended to spread these smolts throughout a nestuary and a river system. But I'd asked Chair Quila and I had a discussion and we we have a problem here. It seems like Oregon does not even want to put this issue on the agenda for adaptive management. Whereas the state of Washington has come up with a reasonable compromise and plan to move forward so that we will meet more of the objectives of Senate Bill eight thirty. And so what I've asked is that, you know, the county step forward and assist us in advocating for some changes that get closer to where Washington is. This is not an issue about conservation. It's not an issue about how we're going to have opportunity for recreational fisheries. They have opportunities now and this has just simply taken for the consumer and the consumer harvesters less opportunities to access fish. And that's about ninety-eight percent in the spring salmon run, for example, is paid by the general public. And none of it is paid by recreational fishing licenses. That's mostly federal money that goes into this. I appreciate the letter that was written. I would ask that we consider a little stronger language in that. I, you don't mind, Chair Quila, I'll just read these two sentences briefly. Says, I would suggest we add, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife has completed a policy review and made some constructive policy revisions per the adaptive management mandates. In Oregon, of this date, no corrective adaptive management has taken place, nor has the ODFW Commission placed the topic on the monthly agenda for discussion. And that I think it's important for the rural communities to to ask that we have fairness. This is why we have the crisis that was created with a lack of partnership in the timber industry, in my opinion. And it seems like these natural resource issues, we need to be fair about it, move forward. And, you know, there's a lot of our communities here, it's not just this issue with rural natural resources, but I think we need to kind of finally step up and demand that we be treated fairly. Appreciate any questions. Jim, do you have anything to add?
No, no, we'll see what the questions are and maybe we can help out on that if there are any.
Can I ask just one real basic question? Can you go over what Senate Bill eight thirty is and what it represented?
Yeah, what Senate Bill eight thirty was designed to do is to essentially what it did, the intent of it was to get rid of commercial fishing by John, by former Governor John Kitzopper is the reality. He thought, well, we'll try to make this work. But what they looked at is some additional selective fishing opportunities where we could avoid some protected stocks, which we stay within federal guidelines on that by law now. But they tried fishing with sains, they've tried fish traps. And believe it or not, of all of the fishing methods, including hook and line, the Columbia River gill net and tangle net technology through time, area and mesh size is the most selective conservation tool that we have for accessing healthy stocks of salmon, where we have mixed stocks of endangered fish. And we we stay within the federal no jeopardy opinions. If we get close to that, the fisheries are shut down. So this is not a conservation issue and it minimizes conservation instead of maximizes, in my opinion.
And what we're really asking for is for this to be added to the agenda for a discussion of the of the board, correct?
Well, I, yeah, from my opinion is that I would ask that our community say, you know, we've been very patient. This has been almost a decade now and you haven't done what the state law says you're supposed to do. It violates, in my opinion, the Magnusson Act. And they just deny, they're denying their responsibility by the adaptive management. And I would, I would ask that the Commission say, you know, we are part of Oregon. This is important to us. This is important to our community. It's iconic to us. It identifies a lot of economic opportunities. And I might add, there's a lot of people that are not commercial fishermen that this is, this is, this is income that creates health for their business. Or in a lot of people's circumstances, it's created income that now they've gone on and they've got an education and they're doing something else. I mean, I've got people that have worked in my, for my company that are now doctors and lawyers and police officers, electricians. There, it creates, our natural resources here, not only is a base for feeding America, feeding the state and adding to tourism, because people love to come and see how they're, just like the cheese factory, they love to see how their food's produced. And so it's much larger than just the fishermen and the people that work in the seafood plants.
I see we had a couple of questions. I think Commissioner Thompson, you were first, then I'll go to Commissioner Webb.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your coming to us again, Mr. Fick. What I'm curious about, is this another urban rural divide? Who's opposed to your point of view? I'm familiar with the effort to shut down commercial fishing in favor of recreational fishing. Who's, that was at the beginning. Who's for it and who's against it now? Please help us understand.
Commissioner, in my opinion, it is another urban rural divide and a lack of understanding of rural values and opportunities that that we don't have a lot of the opportunities for economic growth that you see in the cities. We don't have Nike, we don't have Intel, we don't have those type of opportunities. And quite frankly, if we manage our natural resources correctly, it's a great, it's a great economic base for a community in which I don't want to be part of that myself in there. But, yeah, we have a rural urban divide. We have a lot of ignorance. And I say that respect, I don't say that disrespectfully, they just don't understand how fisheries work. They don't understand how some of our other natural resource-based economies are, you know, responsibly managed and operated. And as myself, I want to see sustainable natural resources. And I want to see, I want to see potatoes and fish and milk and cheese and all these things. And the challenge is to continue to do it constructively and at the same time have these opportunities for the the not, you know, for the fish, the recreational fishing public to enjoy some of that resource too. I don't have a problem with that. It doesn't have to be a question of either or.
Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, thank you. This is an issue that I have been concerned with the whole time I've been on the board, that we exercise, I don't see that the county as an entity supports our fishing industry the way that we should. Remember, I think that Commissioner Quila is, as part of the strategic plan, is working hard about economic development issues around access to startup, et cetera. And the fishing industry, to me, we have almost abandoned in terms, in terms of the economic value in our community. And of course, I mean, and I'm always disappointed when I don't hear more from the fishing industry. And so this is an opportunity, I think, for us to turn our attention, the way we do, hopefully, to other industries, to turn our attention to the fishery issues because they are multi-state. They're, they are, of course, very environmentally sensitive. And I think we need to start thinking about it. One of the things that has happened in our comp plan is that you can tell that the the land use law in Oregon doesn't recognize very much that we have an ocean to the west. And the whole issue of fisheries management and how land use relates to our fisheries, you know, we don't even talk about that much. So I would love to encourage this board to be much more proactive in studying this issue, in understanding, you know, we always hear every year, you know, we know how much money we make from timber sales or other economic activities. But we don't even hear, you know, I'd like to see us have a report regularly from Amanda Gladix to tell us what's going on in the fisheries. I would love to do something really robust, to put together a group of smart people who already understand the politics and the economics and the natural dynamics of this issue and start talking about it and start seeing what we can do as a county to strengthen this this whole issue. I think people always forget too that we have a, that we have a very active port in Hammond that, that, you know, we don't see, the rest of us in the county don't see. I just, I'm sorry to get on a soapbox, but I really think that it's important for the county to pay attention to these issues, especially when they are multi-state. Because a lot of multi-state issues, in my experience, kind of get lost in the shuffle at the local level. And this is an issue that that I think we can't afford not to pay attention to and to support this important force in our community. Because as Steve says, it isn't just economic, it's cultural in many respects for us. So let's do something.
Just to Commissioner Webb's point, I completely agree with you. I would love to have Amanda Gladix give us a presentation and some of the other seafood processors. I know that one of the best presentations I went to was about four years ago, five years ago, when Andrew Bornstein and Amanda Gladix were talking about the entire, you know, bottom fish industry as a whole. And came and presented at the Chamber of Commerce's breakfast and, you know, it was very informative. People really learned a lot because they had no idea the economic that's in our community and what seafoods and Bornsteins and Fishhawk and other seafood processors are really doing and what that brings to Clatsop County with, to, you know, economic impact. It's certainly something that I learned a lot from and I think we all can. So I like the idea of having a presentation regularly about the industry as a whole. And I think it could be very beneficial. So thanks for that suggestion, Commissioner Webb. I know, Commissioner Bangs, you had a, yeah, you had your hand up. Go ahead.
I just had a comment, really. Mainly, I just wanted to state that I fully support our natural resource industries working within conservational law to the fullest extent. I just feel like our natural resource industries are the backbone of our community and they deserve our full support. With that statement made, I do also really am aware that there is a disconnect between operations between Washington and Oregon. And so whatever we can do, strengthen verbiage, whatever we can do to support our fishing industry, our commercial fishing industry, great. And I agree with you that it's not us, commercial versus them, you know, recreational. We can operate commercially and also provide for our recreation. It does not have to be an us or them. And we can do so safely and within, you know, the conservation laws because of all of us in the natural resource industry. I feel like we are heavily aware of the needs of, in this case, the fish. I feel like we are heavily aware of the needs of, in this case, the fish for their survival and for their, for their prosperity. So, thank you.
Chair, Chair Quayle?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I would, I would appreciate, I, I appreciate the comments and I would appreciate you furthering this discussion with the Board of Astoria, Warrenton, and the city, the regional cities to maybe get them on board, share your letter with our, our senators and our representatives in our region, the Coastal Caucus. Because this just isn't fair, the way these people are being treated. There's a lot of people, this is very important too. I mean, I'll give you an example. When they made this plan, they, in one, a summer fishery, for instance, which is, is in June and July, it's something we had worked hard for to get some opportunity back, built the salmon runs back up, so where there's some sustainable harvest. And then the, the fisheries chief, because of the politics at the time with him, he says, well, you can have a share of that, but you can't use a net. You can catch them with your hands. You can catch them with a spear. You can do all these. I mean, they make it, they make it absolutely impossible to, to harvest your share of this fish. And that's what they're doing here now. They're, they, they're trying to do every, there is a segment of, of people that, against the will of the vote, we've had three votes in the last, I believe, 50 years trying to outlaw commercial fishing on the Columbia River. They've all failed by larger, larger numbers each time on the Oregon side. The legislature hasn't passed anything that would outlaw it. And so Governor Kitzhoffer and, you know, his, his once fisheries chief, and then at salmon advisor, they come up with a plan to knock it, knock this industry out without the proper decision-making of, of the, of the people or the republic. And, you know, it was sad when they, they come up with a final public testimony of this plan. His, his former fish, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife Fisheries Chief, who was working for a recreational tackle industry and working for the governor's office, made the comment, don't worry about those people. They don't make enough money. People will, we will, we will just forget about them. That is a public comment by Jim Martin, who was the Fisheries Chief in Oregon, then worked for the governor. And I would hope that my representation would not stand for that type of, would not tolerate that. We talk about a lot of these social issues we have in this country and we've been very professional about it throughout the years. And I don't think your constituents need to be just treated that way. And I know you, I, I know you all are fine people that, that may have differences of opinion, but we don't treat people that way. So.
What's our timeline? I'm sorry to interrupt, but what's our timeline?
You know, I think a good opportunity would be if, 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 I would ask you to consider my, my additional comments on this good letter that Chair Quayle put together. It's, it's concise and short, but I think it's important that we emphasize that you need to do something and come on board with a reasonable plan with Washington. I would, I would volunteer my time with, with any of you or Chair Quayle to, to redraft it and maybe get it out by May, May 19th, 20th would be a good timeline.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir. Given that, are you looking for a motion? This is a work session. We generally don't make, how do you want us to proceed? Chair?
I think, I think this was an opportunity to just have Steve and Jim available to answer any questions, provide any more background that we might need, and then we bring it back to our regular meeting next Wednesday and, and then consider it again then.
Mr. Chair, I think the will of the County Board of Commissioners on this matter is very clear. I think we are unanimously in support of the action that's been proposed by Mr. Fick. I don't see any disagreement and I'd urge that it be placed on the agenda so we could act as quickly and as powerfully as possible to support the essential part of Clatsop County that he represents.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. I don't think we need to vote. We just all in our agreement that and we'll go ahead and put it on for next Wednesday. Thank you for your time and thank you, Jim. Good to see you. I know we'll, we'll talk to you soon.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate the support. Thank you very much. We'll, we'll leave you now.
All right, thanks. Next item is the public road discussion. Public Works Director is here. Hi Ted, thanks for your patience. And this is just a discussion of proposed additions to the county website to explain the different types of roads, how they are maintained. We've also got Joanna Lyons-Antley, our county council with us. This is on page three of the agenda. Joanna, should I turn it over to you?
That would be great. Thank you. So Chair Quayle and commissioners, we're going to first start with something. I don't know if you can see my screen. Okay, thank you. It's a little bit different for me on this, so my, my apologies. I'm trying to figure out how this all works. So this is, first of all, I just wanted to introduce the topic. So, you know, over the last, I want to say six months, we've had a lot of discussion about county roads and county road statuses. And so we thought it would be useful for you and the public to understand a little bit more about what jurisdiction means, how it impacts county responsibilities, how it fits into the county as a whole. And then Ted is going to talk about, Public Works Director is going to talk a little bit more about what work we actually do on the county roads. So the first thing I wanted to bring to your attention is this Clatsop County web map. So our great staff, they've added the different aspects of each of the different roads and they've kind of categorized them. And so this is available to anybody who has the internet. You can go onto the web maps site and there's an actual section that has different layers. And in those layers, there's actually a layer for roads by jurisdiction. So you can just see what we're looking at right now, which is what road belongs to what jurisdiction. As you can see, the, the thing that pops out to me when I look at this is I see where the state highways are. You've got Highway 30, 101, 26. And those are all in red. Those are state highways. They're funded with federal dollars. The county does not have responsibility for those. The next thing you probably see is some of our lesser-known state highways that are in the dark yellow, like 202. And again, that's state responsibility, things that the county is not responsible for. And the next thing you see is the black and that is Clatsop County's responsibility. So those are designated as county roads. And the designation can happen in all kinds of different ways, but essentially they're designated as county roads, so we have a responsibility to maintain these roads. You also see a lot of dashed lines and those are black dashed and those are private roads, meaning that they are owned by private landowners. And you can see most of that is forest land, so they're going through state forest or privately held forest. But there's a lot of private roads that are in the, pretty much the center of Clatsop County. And then the last thing I want to point out is city roads. So city roads are, are in within a city, so I'm just going to pick on seaside here. And you can see those are in white yellow. And any publicly dedicated road within a city is city jurisdiction. So the city is responsible for it, except for county roads and state highways. So you can see 101, obviously the state still maintains this. They may have an agreement with the city. But for the most part, that is the way that it operates. So I just kind of want to show you on a map, not to try to make you dizzy or anything. But I want to show you on a map where that might have an impact. So you can see the black, we have responsibility over this county road and it is within City Warrenton. So that is all important to know and I, I know Ted's going to explain it a little bit more. And then the one last thing I want to show you is roads that are dedicated to the public but are not county roads and are in the unincorporated areas. So those are interesting roads and that, that is the roads I, I kind of want to focus on. So I'm going to scroll down a little bit farther here, again, not to make you sick, but I'm going to show you one area. And I know Ted's going to talk a little bit more about this, but those are in gray. And these are public roads that have been, again, dedicated to the public in an unincorporated area, but are not county roads. Okay, so the county roads again are in the black area and then the gray area. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Are we can just kind of wait for Ted to give his presentation now?
One thing I might mention is if you scroll in closely on the road, whatever road it is, scroll in, scroll in really close, like Ocean View there, whichever one you want. And then you click on the road. Then a box comes up and it tells you owner, public. So one that stands out that has county ownership, public ownership and private, I believe is Pacific. Scroll back out and go to Pacific there and you'll see all three owners on the same road. Clatsop County jurisdiction, public was Clatsop County jurisdiction and private. So that's kind of a confusing, the roads in Arch Cape are a little confusing. So any questions on that?
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. Well, I'm used to considering them as privately maintained public roads. Is that the same thing? The, the ones that, where the neighbors are responsible for maintaining them, but the public has access to the right of way? It's just a different label, I think, but I just wanted to clarify.
I think that is accurate. And I think when Ted talks a little bit about more how we maintain them, we're going to talk a little bit more about the options going forward for those particular roads that are public roads, but not county roads. So.
Okay, so these are all items too, that we are trying to help the public see how these roads are maintained. So we want these things to be updated on our website so that they can figure out how to get to what we're speaking of here on web maps and just click on it and see what type of road they live on. And then also give a description on our website, how to get there and what these roads are. So I, I think I, I gave you a few attachments. One is the road definitions and Joanna explained that really well, what a county road is and what a local access or public road is, as well as private. And then again, in that attachment, it shows some questions that people ask. One is what's the status of the road that I live on? And so we, we can help them through the website to identify the road that they live on. And then the other part of that goes to the, how are, we know how county roads are maintained. And I, I sent an attachment there on our county road operations and we'll put that on our website as well to show the type of services that we provide on county roads that the board has dedicated for maintenance. And so the type of mileage that we're dealing with, the type of surfaces. I didn't divide up the type of paved surfaces. We actually have like three different types of surfaces. But those are asphalt, chip seal, and we do still have some roads that are concrete. And then we have quite a few gravel roads that we maintain. But we provide all these services, services of surface maintenance, traffic services, drainage, traffic control, and then structure maintenance. So we have, you know, 68 bridges, 69 now after the John Day Bridge was put together. And a lot of guardrails that we maintain. And then we respond to emergencies as well and disasters. We have our engineering and survey services. In our engineering, we provide inspection for public road right of ways. And so even though it's a public road, it's under our jurisdiction so that we have requirements to be met inside of a public road, a right of way. And then we do permitting and for oversized loads on county roads. And then we have our fleet services as well as our fuel network. So those are the services that we provide to county roads. Now to public roads. I think Commissioner Thompson brought up how those roads might be maintained by the public. So the people that live on those roads, they can, there's a lot of ways that they can get their roads maintained. One is by passing the hat in their neighborhood and, and getting maintenance done and sharing the costs amongst one another. There's another method that we've used a couple of times and that's the formal method of an LID, a local improvement district. And so that provides a method to where a person can get their road fixed to or built to a county standard. And then the possibility of the board taking that into the road system for county maintenance. So that's a process. It's a lengthy process, but it can be done. And then there's another process too, for just maintenance, a maintenance LID. And so people can come before the board and that, if this is approved, then an assessment is made, I believe. We haven't done this before, but Joanna, correct me if I'm wrong. But we do an assessment and then it's assessed to all those households that are on that road. And then there is another method that we, that you realize of public roads that the county forces can do some of this work. And it's, it's minimal in what we can do. But we do have the transient room tax. We can't use county road funds on a public road unless there's some sort of an emergency. And then the board can redirect that, those funds in an emergency to abate a problem on a road. Maybe trees have fallen or culvert blew out or something like that. And it becomes an emergency for emergency services to get there or getting to and from their homes. So that could be done. But through the transient room tax, we just take care of basically pothole patching and brush cutting. And because there's, the transient room tax, 75% of the funds from that are to be spent in the Arch Cape Road System on public roads. And the other 25% can be used throughout the other county roads, which we have 150 miles of public roads. And so that portion, that 25% equates to about $12,000 a year. So it's not much when you think of the expense of these types of services. So that's why we've just taken it down to, that's part of why. We've taken it down to just pothole patching and brush clearing so that when people call and request these types of services, we have something available. Um, so that when people call and request these types of services, we have something available. Um, there's another, uh, go.
Oh, I was just going to, 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 um, confirm what you were saying Ted. Is that state law prohibits us from using, um, county road fund dollars, um, that we receive through gas tax money. Um, and arguably from the road district on, uh, roads that are dedicated. But aren't part of the county road system. So our funds really need to be used for the county road system. Um, which again, that's the black lines on the map. And so we, we struggle with those, um, roads that are, um. You know, public roads, I think Commissioner Thompson said it really accurately, which are, you know, they're, they're public roads, but they're really to me, maintain privately. Uh, so the county really struggles on how to assist, um, you know, our citizens to keep those roads maintained. Um, and so, uh, as we've started to research, um, these issues, we have a variety of different options that citizens can avail themselves of. That we're happy to assist them with, um, that will get their road, um, either to a county road stand or, or at least try to maintain the road.
The other, uh, option, uh, that we give, uh, people that live on public roads that are gravel roads. Is, uh. They can fill out or ask for a quest for, for grading their road. And we bill for that service, but it's fairly inexpensive, uh, to do that if we do it in line with our normal grading process. So if we're out in the, uh, we'll say the Napa area and there's a public road there. That someone would like to have graded, then they just pay for that service. And, uh, we have a, I, I put a sheet on there. Uh, for our, uh, grading request and it shows the rates that we charge. And, uh, it, as I said, it's not overly expensive. It only takes, it depends on the length of the road, but we did one just recently and I think it cost them three hundred dollars. Uh, for half a mile road to get it graded up and they were. Very happy, so, um.
Commissioner Thompson.
Well, so Ted, you said, uh, someone, when someone wants, and, and thank you for the good work you do, it's just a joy. Um, someone.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't quite hear you.
Okay, let me do it like this, does that help?
Yeah.
If I touch a certain part of my computer, it doesn't transmit sounds. Okay, so no hands, mom. Um, I remember that the, um, LC Vine Maple Fire Department. Wanted some grading. Do they, are they charged as a public entity the same as a private individual?
The, the fire department, uh, we, we would use. Um, the public road fund for the fire department.
Okay.
Yeah, but for the public at large, we just don't have enough money. Um, to spread out over a hundred and fifty miles of road, so we charge for the grading service. We don't charge for pothole patching and brush clearing. Uh, we, actually, we charge it to the public road fund.
So that's very helpful. I have one other question. Um, in my neighborhood. I want to put this respectfully and delicately. We don't always have agreement on who gets to speak for the neighbors. In asking for county support along a variety of issues. Is there any required or preferred neighborhood structure? Or can any neighbor call you? I'm trying to make this kind of organized and I know you're scratching your head. I scratched my hand on this a lot too. I don't know how council or my colleagues want to help us deal with this. Because you know, when there are differences of opinion among neighbors. And in unincorporated areas, there are very few, um. Uh, corporate structures, municipal corporate structures. So how do we decide who gets to be? The boss or who gets to ask? Because you just want to do good work. We want to use taxpayer dollars legally, but whose voice is heard and how do? All the neighbors in a fair way, oh yay, hooray, I'm making myself clear. Thank you.
Maybe if I can jump in on, on that question. Uh, so that's what jurisdiction means. Um, so the county really has the jurisdiction and, and will determine what the road maintenance. Um, well, I shouldn't say maintenance, but what the road is going to look like. And if neighbors can't come to. Uh, conclusion, I mean, ultimately it's the neighbors who has to pay, the neighbors who have to pay for it. So I think the public works folks, they do a great job, they try to navigate that the best they can. There is no right answer on how to handle, you know, neighborhood, um, issues. It's just trying to figure out what makes the, the best sense and every road is different, every person is different. And, uh, our folks do a really good job in trying to navigate that issue.
I think so. And if I may follow up. County manager, you know, I'm always a great one for saying, could we add this to our bucket list? Um, and, and I'll defer to your opinion, of course, but it seems to me that these kinds of. Uh, common interest, but different, differing opinions about the common interest. If there's a way we could put that on a bucket list, because I think in terms of neighborhood livability. It dovetails with some of the planning issues. So planning and roads and drainage and all of those are common benefit issues. Without a common voice to express the common will through some kind of organizational mechanism.
What do you think? Is that a bucket list item or you want to leave it alone?
I'm, I'm happy to put anything on the bucket list, so, um. So I, I think this is a challenge and I think that. You know, coming from a jurisdiction that had, you know, two hundred and sixty thousand people that lived in the, in the urban unincorporated area. Where we had really similar issues and then we also have a strong rural, they, Washington County has a strong rural, um, population. You know, I think one of the best means, and when you talk about governance and jurisdiction. Is to have some of these methods, uh, like LIDs and others where communities can come together. And have that conversation amongst themselves and then come up with a solution that deals with the maintenance. Um, desirability, the maintenance levels as well as the funding levels. Um, and so I think that's one thing, I think that. Not having cities in some of these more urban areas is a complicated factor because. Counties generally don't provide city level services. Um, counties are really good at providing countywide services. And so, so it is a conundrum and certainly we will add that to the bucket list, which is growing, so.
And if I could just follow up on that, the, the complicating factor becomes who's, who gets to vote on this? Because if we say only permanent full-time residents. I mean, I have someone who's, has, uh, five houses around the world and still claims this as a permanent full-time residence. And yet, second, I mean, who?
Yeah, so I'll just speak to the, uh, LID type of a structure and Joanna can, uh, tell me if I'm wrong, but. My understanding and, and my history dealing with this is that it's the property owners that are, that are the ones that are. That are quote signing affirmation for their support of an LID. And so it is a property owner, it's, doesn't matter who the residence is. Um, and so, and so those are some of the vehicles that, that, that already exist now that really. Allows a certain level of self-governance for these areas that otherwise don't have a municipal. Entity to go to. Um, and I think the counties typically provide a conduit or, or a resource to kind of organize those. Kinds of efforts, when I say organize, I mean that lightly, but, um. But I think that oftentimes that is what brings a community together. And they form a constructive approach, um, towards some of those public infrastructure issues. That they feel strong about because of the livability factor. Um, so that's just one option.
I, I was, if I can, I, I would like to say that there's another type of, of a special district. It's called a special road district. Um, actually in Klamath, um, I'm part of a special road district. And it has its own board, um, much like any other special district. It's different than an LID, LID, you know, they just, they have the improvement. Or the, uh, the operation, the maintenance and, um, it's not a special district. Uh, so there are multiple different options that any community can use, um, to, to, uh, fix an identified problem.
So follow-up question then, this is very interesting. Well, because the board issue, if the property owners can each vote. And each is qualified to be considered as a member of the board, because it's who votes? Who can sit on the board? Then there's a lot of conflict and a lot of different points of view. And part of our difficulty in the planning issues is that only the full-time voters. Can vote on, for example, the water board. But if there is a more democratic, no represent, um, no taxation without representation. Structure that's legally available to, to, uh, provide a jurisdiction. Within which services can occur and the, and every voice is heard. That is more, I want to say small B democratic in my mind. Oh, interesting.
Yeah, that's where you might go back to what Joanna was talking about with the special road district. Because an area that's affected would have their own district. And their own, uh, group. And become that. Voice.
Having any other questions? I see Commissioner Webb.
Yeah, I, um, once again, um, this is an issue that has come up repeatedly. In our comp plan deliberations. Uh, and it's, you know, it's applicable to, to virtually any infrastructure. Uh, that people need to, to live. Uh, the solid waste disposal issue is something I believe is a critical infrastructure need that this county needs to address like yesterday. Uh, and, um, and a lot of it relates to. Uh, future urbanization considerations and by urbanization, I mean urban growth boundaries. Uh, and what the responsibilities are, those are, those are governance issues that I think that. We, we all recognize, um, and in some districts, it's, it's more, uh, more. Important or more vital or more controversial than it is in others, but we've got to deal with this. We, we've got to be able to say, what is the future of unincorporated Clatsop County? And how are we going to provide services, uh, you know, in general? And I, I, I'm, uh, I think you all know that I'm kind of upset about the pause of the. Of the comp plan issues because, um, I think this was something that was coming out of those advisory groups. That we need to hear, um, that, that we need to know about and it's, um. It, and, and, and I think it's not just roads. But in general, my feeling is that I love getting this piece. Um, about the road ownership, et cetera. Uh, and think it would be a great addition, um, to, to our, to our website, because I think it's very clear. It, it defines different things, it talks about processes, I really like it a lot. Um, and, um, one, one problem for me is that. Um, the GIS system. Is, um, I mean. I don't think ours is that easy, it's not the easiest one. Um, that I've ever worked with. Um, but, um, a lot of citizens just don't have the capability. Um, to, to go to the GIS system when they, when they need information. Uh, and so I think, I, I think that's something that might need to be addressed in a different way and I, I don't, I just don't know. I, I, I don't, I know what the answer to that is. Um, whether it's to say to someone, um, you know, if, if you can't or won't. Go to the, to our online web maps, um, then call us and, um. We'll print a map out for you for whatever area you're interested in. Um, I think that particularly for people in more rural areas, that's a service we should, we should provide for them. Um, I don't know, I, of course, I don't know how you pay for all that paper and ink. Um, but that's, that's, that's my deal.
Yeah, so we can provide, uh, an explanation. Uh, to this process that Joanna has up here to show them how to identify roads. And, uh. We, we do, uh, provide maps when people request it, as well as if they wanted to come in. They can come into our desk and we have a computer screen on the outside and we can lead them right through it.
Good.
Any more questions? If not, I think we'll go ahead and wrap up the, uh, public road discussion. Thank you Ted and thank you Joanna. Item is the transferring financial accounts from Clatsup County Housing Authority to Northwest Oregon Housing Authority. On page eleven.
Chair Quayla and commissioners, um, this will be a very quick work session, I hope. Um, we are doing the final winding up of the Clatsup County Housing Authority. Um, and, sorry, all my cameras moved. I can't see, um. Just a second. Thank you for your patience. Uh, so, um, we, um, are asking, um, in the future, at a future board meeting. It'll probably be the next board meeting, um, to enter as a Clatsup County Housing Authority to, um. Transfer the outstanding financial accounts to the, um, Northwest Oregon Housing Authority. Um, as you all, um, are aware, we've been in a process, a long transition, a transitioning all of the assets. Um, to the Northwest, um, Housing, uh, Authority and this is the last that we have identified, um, with the current board. Um, there are just a few, uh, financial accounts to transfer. We've contacted actually Nina Reed, who was on, um, this call a little bit earlier. Uh, she worked with each of the different financial institutions, um, to figure out the different process. And of course, banks all have different processes, so, um, we tried to have one resolution that accomplished everything and I think we. We have done that and that'll be at the next board meeting. I'm ha- happy to answer any questions. Um, I do, I will note that, um, we are trying to close out and dissolve. Um, the Clatsup County Housing Authority by June thirtieth, so we're endeavoring to do that and. Um, yes, technically we can do this action after it's been dissolved, but I think it's much cleaner if we just do it before, so.
Any questions for county council? No? Great. Well, thank you Joanna.
Thank you.
We have any other items on the agenda for the work session? Well, if hearing that, we'll go ahead and adjourn, but we will have an executive session, a very brief one to review and evaluate.